Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, September 24th, 2019. Please rise for a moment of silence. Without the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Leturno?
Here.
Thank you. Maroon?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Here? Chertel?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandri? And Chairman Savoni?
I am here, and Counselor Zandri did advise me that he has a work conflict this evening. Onto item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve consent agenda items A through E and G.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda as moved passes. Onto item four, the item removed from the consent agenda is item 3F. May I have a motion, please?
I move we approve an amendment to the budget, increasing expenses and revenue in the amount of $11,060.
Second.
To the Wallingford 350 Celebration Special Revenue Fund?
Sure.
Thank you.
Second.
Is there anybody here from the Wallingford 350 Committee? Mr. Sullivan, would you like to come forward? You don't have to, it's okay.
This doesn't affect him, he's got the parade.
Oh, thank you. Mayor?
But-
Counselor Morganstein, this was your item.
Yeah, so a quick question, so this is money that they have raised, that they are then going to use to fundraise, is that my understanding of what this item is doing?
Well, this allows, it's an increase in revenue and the expenditures. So with that increase, they're able to acquire caps, shirts, whatever, which they intend to sell, which will give them money for financing what they need. So we're reflecting increase in revenue and increase in the sales side.
So the revenue side, that $9,000-plus dollars came from them to us?
This is all anticipation, this is an estimate of what will be happening.
But so-
We don't have the money now.
So the money is coming from what source is the question that I have?
The money will be coming from the sale of items that they will purchase.
But the money to purchase the items, that then they're saying we anticipate to pretty much double our money by selling these items, where is the originating money? Is that coming out of an account?
No.
From the town? Is that coming from them?
That is coming from the transaction we're talking about. We're increasing their revenue and increasing their ability to sell or make, spend at the same time, and it's an estimate of what will be happening.
Am I unclear? So my read on it initially was, they were asking the town for an amount of money to be spent in order to earn an amount of money. Someone else I spoke to thought that it was possibly that they were bringing that money to us in an account to then raise this money. Where is the seed money for this being taken?
The seed money is an estimate of revenues. The money is not there now. All of the budget is an estimate. You're estimating what revenues will come in, and you authorize expenditures from the revenues.
So if I look to raise money for the Girl Scouts, and I need to spend $9,300 to make $18,000, I have to have $9,300 to purchase the shirts and the T-shirts and the caps and the... So my reason in bringing this up is that I and the public would like to know, an estimate to me doesn't tell me, some money somewhere is paying for the caps and the T-shirts and the-
Right, so the estimate here is that we will be increasing expenditures, and we'll also be increasing revenues.
Okay, so we are-
Expenditures will result in more revenue coming in.
Okay, so my thinking is correct. We are spending an amount of money in anticipation of making 50% more out of that money, which is what my intent was. I wanted to be transparent in the fact that we are, as a town, spending money to make money for this event, which it takes money to raise more money. So that brings me to my next question in this vein. I'm excited about the 350 celebration, it's a laudable cause. I tried to reach Mr. Bose today, but he was off. How much money has the town so far, given, I believe, over the course of two budgets, we have given money to the 350 event?
Well, that would show up as our revenue for this budget, it would show I don't have for previous budgets.
That's what I-
But I believe we're amending... What is the total amount in this special revenue? Do you have that page? I don't have the page.
No, that was not in our backing material.
Well, it would be in your budget.
Right, it would be in the budget, which I...
And that would tell you what's in the budget.
And I believe, so I believe this budget year and previous budget year, we have given, and again, that was my only point in bringing it up, to be transparent in how much money is given from the town, from the taxpayers for this endeavor.
While we have one of us doing research, I'm going to refer to Mr. Devaney's letter, where he requests the ability to spend $9,465 for shirts, hoodies, hats, and an additional $1,595 for public notice signs. That gets us right near the $11,060. He says they expect to recover the expenses with revenues forecast at $17,880, so there is the intention of increasing.
Right.
It's a fundraiser.
Yeah.
You're right, it's intended to generate revenue on top of what's being spent.
I apologize that we're having to look, again, I tried to call Mr. Bose, he was not here today. I don't know if we can-
Seventy this budget, forty-five the last budget.
Oh, you found it?
Counselor Fishbein appears to have located it in his budget book.
Mr. Chairman, I believe in-
Thank you.
In the current budget, we appropriated $70,000. In the prior budget, we appropriated $45,000, and if I recall correctly, there was a mid-year appropriation of $7,500. So adding that up, that's five, two, one, five. Hundred and fifty-two thousand.
And then, of course, we know that they were requesting from corporate sponsorship and other endeavors. Again, I just wanted to put these numbers forward, and I think I have the answer I need, unless anyone else has a question.
Thank you. Questions from anyone else on the council? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mayor, is there a reason why there's nobody here from the committee here tonight?
Well, Jim Bose was not able to make it. I didn't anticipate that there would be any real questions on this, but that's why.
Okay, so Mr. Bose is a member of the committee?
No, he's not a member of the committee. Oh, you mean, why someone isn't here from the committee?
Yes, sir.
I thought Bob Devaney was going to be here, he's not, clearly. John Sullivan is part of the effort, but he would not have the overall issue, he is in charge of the parade.
Okay, and just along the lines of what Counselor Morgaster was getting at, we've already given this entity, this committee, tens of thousands of dollars. I would expect that they're using that money to have the materials they're going to sell made, and then upon sale of those materials, they're anticipating the revenues would exceed the $9,000 outlay. Is that what I'm to glean from the letter?
No, my understanding is we're amending the expenditure side because they need to purchase items. And the result of that purchase of items will end up with revenue coming in. So that's why we're increasing the expenditure side.
The original, if I recall correctly, the original $7,500 that we gave to the entity, the committee, was for the purchase of items, and they did purchase items because I've seen them around town, and some of those have been sold, I would expect probably not all of them. Why do we need to do another... Why is this coming before us, essentially? Why can't they just take the funds that they presently have? It's sort of like, I'm looking at it sort of like the youth and social services, you know, sometimes they get money that comes in as a result of an event or something like that, and we show it as an appropriation in. We've already given tens of thousands of dollars, which the entity can take and buy T-shirts and whatever, and then, just accounting principles, once they get that revenue in, then we would realize that. I'm just, this is a little bit, being handled a little bit differently.
Well, we're not, we're not allowing, they don't want to be using monies, monies encumbered for the parade for this purpose. So certainly that plays a role.
Okay.
The parade's in a position where they, if they're going to enter into contracts, they need deposits and et cetera. So rather than advance money from the parade and look to replenish it, they're looking to authorize expenditures in an increased amount, and then receive revenue as a result of subsequent resale of the items.
Okay, so assuming that they have no revenue to buy the product with, and they want to shelter the monies that they have in the account for the parade, are we giving them a check for this additional money? Because that's not the way this is structured, this is structured-
No, we're authorizing expenditures here. We authorize additional expenditures, and then they will sell those items and receive revenue.
Where, so, and my math was incorrect before, the total of those numbers I gave before is 122,500. So where is that money now? Because I'm hearing that they've got $100,000 or something like that, they don't want to spend that, they want to keep that for the parade. Okay, we set that money aside, and I don't know how much they're setting aside for that from their account. Is there $9,465 left that they are not protecting? That's ultimately the question.
I don't know that. These, the figures you see in the budget are estimates. Budget figures don't necessarily represent... At the time we put together a budget, we don't know what the actuals will be.
You're talking about the parade?
We'd have to look at actuals to know what these figures are. You're looking at an adopted budget, which is an estimate.
Well, we, as the council, have authorized that entity to spend up to the amount that's budgeted, right? We should reasonably assume, I would think, that if budgeted properly, that the majority of that money would be expended. I'm just trying to figure out if they have the money now to buy the product-
But they don't.
Okay.
They're representing they do not have the money to buy the additional product.
Well, I'd like to know why not, quite frankly.
I can't tell you that, they're out of money, they've-
That's very troubling. It's very troubling, because, you know, if $7,500, which was the seed money, was appropriated expressly for that purpose, and I'm being told that that money was expended, and I don't know where that product went, you know, if it was given away, that's a bad thing. I don't know. But if the revenues from getting that product did not exceed $7,500, then somebody's not doing something right.
When was the $7,500?
I believe it was October when this committee was originally formed, because I remember we did the appropriation, and then there was the announcement about it, I believe, after the appropriation. If I recall correctly, it was October, it was during the middle of a budget year, there was question, I remember, Public Celebrations was here, there was discussion about whether or not it was going to be an appointee on the board and all that stuff. So it was not during the regular budget, but I distinctly remember there was a $7,500 appropriation. And that representation, certainly they've been getting, you know-
But that's a year ago.
I think it was more than a year ago.
Okay, so we have a new budget.
Yes, but-
The newer budget reflects figures here. I don't know how you can be talk, you're not going to find that in the new budget figure because that happened a year ago.
Well, two budgets ago, they were given $45,000 in that budget, so I'm to understand that that was for the parade. I understand that they have made a decision to shelter that funds, to keep that for the parade. $70,000 is in this budget. My understanding is that also is for the parade. I know that product, I've seen stickers, hats, T-shirts, all of that, that material. I have to assume that the $7,500 was used for that, because if the parade money was used for that, then that goes, that's in contravention to what I'm hearing about what they intend to do. So, you know, I'm concerned. If we're throwing money at something-
But we can't, we can't mix the two years. We're looking at the 1920 budget, you're talking about the 1819 budget, and there's an accounting of all those funds, but then, that's, you'd like a report with regard to accounting of what happened to all of the sales and the revenues received. That can be obtained. I don't have that information here tonight.
Well, what about, in this budget that we're in, didn't we carry over the $45,000? That was appropriated the first year because it was not expended, and usually that's-
What does the total show for this year?
$70,000 is on the page at Social Services for this budget, but I think if I-
You mean, special revenue funds? What do you mean, social services?
As an expenditure, it's on page 44 of the budget. It shows, it says Wallingford 2020. I'm just going to go back to that page.
Okay, so if it shows $70,000, that doesn't show the entire amount of money because money was appropriated a prior year?
Yes, the $45,000.
Right, and that's, would still be there for the parade, unless something has been done to the parade.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, 70 plus 45 plus 7.5 is 122.5.
But that doesn't show what you're looking at, right?
I don't understand.
You're saying it shows 70,000 there?
Yes, sir.
So there's a prior budget whose figures doesn't show in the current budget. You would have to look at a balance of where that stands, which is not a budgetary issue, it's a, it's a report with regard to where that stands as a special revenue, or as, I thought it was a special revenue fund, but-
Well, special revenue would, revenue would come in for this entity from sale of products, but expenditure, as reflected on the budget, would be the money that we've appropriated, authorizing the committee to expand. So that's what I'm saying. And two years ago, the budget reflected 45,000, and the present budget, it has 70,000, and I believe there was a $7,500 appropriation prior there too, which is 122.5. I know that in this budget, when I was reviewing the backup, we weren't given a, well, I think we were given a, but I don't have the book with me. Is there, do we have to approve this tonight? Because I really would like to have, if Mr. Devaney is the representative, to ask him questions, you know, where did the 7.5 go? Do you have an updated budget? How you doing with selling stuff? Because if we're going to appropriate, because based upon that track record, if you're telling me that they are out of money, then I don't know how I can possibly believe that now they're going to spend $9,465 and get profit off of that. That's what the letter says. But based upon the track record that I'm hearing about, they're saying that they forecast revenues of $17,880, which is almost, it's almost 100% profit. It's almost double 9,465, so-
Okay, so you're questioning what they have done and what they intend to do with these funds. The bottom line issue here is, though, that we're not taking money from somewhere else and putting new money in there. We're not taking $11,000 or whatever it is from some other place and putting it in here. These are estimates on what they need to spend to make more money.
You said they had no money to buy this product.
I didn't say anything about, I said they had no money. I'm saying they want an additional amount of money to buy product. Whether this is in addition to something left over, I don't know. But this, we're, the expenditures and the sales here are as a result, they're one and the same transaction. You're making money from spending money. So it's not coming from some other place, contingency, transfer from some other department, we're not doing any of those things.
But is it coming out of money we've already given them, or is it-
No.
Nebulous money that we feel is going to become more money?
They're anticipating that if they spend-
I can anticipate that I'm going to make 100% profit, but if I don't have the $9,300 to spend initially, I can't make double that money.
Counselor Morganstein, you're on Counselor Fishbein's time, I haven't recognized you, I'm sorry. Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mayor, I'm just trying to figure out, how much money, if you know, the entity has in the bank, of the $9,465 they intend to expend to get the product?
I don't have an actual sheet in front of me. I don't have that. That's what you'd have to see. What we're doing is changing a budget figure. Budget figures are always based upon estimates.
Well, they're also based upon projections, and I-
Well, that's an estimate. That's an estimate, a projection is an estimate.
So, and I, I recognize there's nobody here from the entity, I mean, can I ask, are you assigned to this entity, that you go to meetings and that kind of stuff? I don't want to, you know, bear down on questions if-
No, I don't, I don't go to the meetings, no.
Because I'm, I'm just questioning, based upon the track record that I'm hearing, what the estimate is, because estimates have to be reasonable also.
Okay, I mean, you're, you have questions about what is being presented, I understand that. This did go through Jim Bose, our comptroller, who has all of the records regarding the funds, and he was satisfied that this is the appropriate action to take. If you have questions specifically about what items they have and what price they're selling them at, and will they really make that kind of profit, or how much they spent before, that was not discussed when we met with Mr. Devaney. We can get those answers, but at this point, the finance department is satisfied that this is appropriate. And they're the ones who hold all of this money.
I understand.
The 350th does not have its own bank account and deal with those things separately. All of it is handled through the finance department.
And do we know if this product has already been ordered?
I don't know.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get to whether or not it's, you know, it's the last minute or what. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this item to our next meeting.
I don't hear a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion to table? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay, so this is on the motion to table, correct?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
No.
Leturno?
No.
Maroon?
No.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
No. Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Counselor Leturno.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to follow up. There was a question asked if the items have been ordered. Yes, they have, because these items will be in place for sale at Celebrate, which is coming up in two weeks.
Thank you. Counselor Morganstein, did you have anything else?
Yeah, well, again, so, you know, it's put on the consent agenda. Again, I appreciate the event that we're going to be having, the parade is, I guess, we're looking for a huge parade, and so are our expenses for other events of this event kind of taking a backseat? And as I said, I was out of turn, I apologize. If I'm looking to raise $17,000, I need to have an amount of money to spend initially. It's all well and good to talk about a budget and how we move money here and there, but my reason in bringing this forward is just that. How we do and the time that we do these things, and leaving ourselves very little time to question, is not transparent to our taxpayers. Thank you.
Counselor Laffin?
Yeah, I think this is just an accounting thing, they, we need to show that they're spending money, and then they're going to take it in, it's going to kind of wash out. I think the, where is the money technically coming from, what pot? I think everything is running a little, well, not I think, everything's running a little more fluidly than that, especially with the event is in two weeks. This is just a, this is an attempt, an attempt, this is trying to be transparent by showing the expenditure of these, of this money for these goods that are to be sold, instead of just the committee doing whatever they want and using money that they've got and turning it over. They could have just done all this, and we never would have seen any kind of record of it. I think this is the attempt to put it on the books as far as our ledger goes.
Anyone else on the council? Anyone from the public? Counselor Leturno, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It might help going down the road, as this event is building into the, into the coming year, that the council get a quarterly report on the- the council get a quarterly report on the money taken in and expenses. It might be helpful that... So something like this doesn't creep up again. Because there will be a lot of money over time transferred for different things. And I think it would just help if there was a better... I know Mr. Boz knows about it, and Mayor, you'll know about it. But I think as far as the council goes, a quarterly report wouldn't hurt. Generated from Mr. Boz. Thank you.
Counselor Testa.
I'm a member of the Steering Committee with this. So I probably shouldn't vote on this. Just for... There's not an appearance of impropriety in that respect, or more or less, not impropriety, but just favoritism or lack of partiality. But having said that, I don't have any questions about... Not anyone properly handling money. There's actually a meeting tomorrow night. But I will say this, sitting here. It appeared to me that there was a question, a simple question, and that is, was the town fronting an additional nine thousand dollars to the committee to do business? That's what it looks like. And that's not a bad thing or a good thing. It just... That's what it kind of appeared to be, was the town putting an additional nine thousand dollars into the budget for the parade, I mean, for the Celebration Committee mid-year? And if so, why? Now, the explanation was very clear, but at this moment, as we sit here, no one can really answer the questions that came up. And that I find disturbing. It bothers me that we don't have an answer, a clear answer for something that should be very simple. That's unfortunate. That's simply it. Because it is public money. No one's alleging impropriety. But it bothers me that we don't have a very clear explanation, and we should. Someone should be able to explain this, and we haven't got it. Having said that, I mean, I would approve it if I was going to vote, but I probably shouldn't, so I'm going to abstain.
Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I think if you look at the form that we use here, it shows eleven thousand sixty dollars to revenue sales. It shows eleven thousand sixty dollars to expenditures. There's no transfer of money from any other account. The money is not coming from within the budget somewhere else. So where is this eleven thousand dollars being taken from the town of Wallingford to put in here? I mean, the reason here is it shows revenue of sales and it shows expenditures. I don't know how else to explain it. The expenditures will create the sales. It's a wash, as Mr. Laffin indicated. That's the answer when you look at the explanation on this sheet of paper that requests the action. You can say, well, if they don't make that money due to the sales, what happens? Well, you could run a deficit, I suppose, or you'd take it from somewhere else. But the expectation is that there is no taking of money from anywhere else.
Well, that's good. That was the question. But it just never seemed to be a simple answer.
But does that answer your question now? I mean, these forms describe what's happening. Eleven thousand...
A simple answer would be, when someone asks, where is the nine thousand dollars coming from to buy the shirts they're going to sell? The answer would be, they have it. This is just a different way of accounting for it. That would have been the answer everybody needs. That's the common sense answer. They have it. Because if they don't, we have to give it to them. There's only two ways. So there's still not a clear answer. I understand it's an accounting thing, but you were asked, where does the nine thousand coming from? And a simple answer should be, oh, they have it. They just, they need to spend it, so it has to be put into the expenditure fund in the budget to make the accounting look right. That would have been the answer I was expecting to hear twenty-five minutes ago. That's the only reason I'm bringing up, we're not getting a clear answer.
I disagree with you.
Okay. Counselor Laffin.
Thanks. No, Counselor, I think when you rephrased it at the end, that was the most clear that I heard, what I think Counselor Morgenstein was trying to get at. They've got the money. They're, you know, they're going to spend it to bring the DeLorean from Back to the Future here, but they didn't... That's not... They didn't... That money is set aside for that. So here, they're saying, but we're going to take a sidestep. We're going to spend eleven thousand on this, but we're going to make the money back, and it's going to be a wash.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, you can look at this as an authorization. You're giving authority to spend a certain amount of money, and it's based upon a certain amount of revenue. It's an authorization. It doesn't necessarily mean you have the money right now. If they had the money right now, why would they need this at all? We wouldn't be going through any of this if they had the money right now. So I'm not sure I understand the logic.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the document, the backup that we have, indicates that revenue is anticipated based upon the estimations, the budgeting, whatever forecasting, to be seventeen thousand e eighty. But the first page indicates revenue to be eleven thousand sixty. So where is the accounting for the six thousand eight hundred and twenty that's based upon the forecasting?
I suspect if that money is actually realized, we'll have to accept it at a later meeting, and then the budget will then be adjusted accordingly. But that money hasn't materialized yet. We're just creating a zero.
Okay, that's reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Leturno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
No.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Abstain. Chairman?
Chairman Savoni, I'm getting there.
Yes, motion passes.
Motion passes.
Onto item five, the public question and answer period. You have any takers? Does not appear as though we do. That being said, I will close the public question and answer period, move ahead. I'm actually going to move to the addendum, item nine. Can we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the abandonment of a portion of Beaumont Road, approximately five hundred and seventy-five square feet adjacent to the property located at eight hundred North Colony Road.
Second. Moved and seconded. We did have some discussion about this at the meeting where we voted to publish notice of the intention to abandon. Do we have representatives from the owner of the property here tonight to answer questions? If there are any... Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
The Law Department has determined that this piece was not intentionally kept out of the original abandonment. It was just an oversight. The Law Department sees no reason not to abandon this. In fact, I think that it will keep a piece, or residential piece, productive and continue it on the tax rolls, where if it has a contaminated well, it could become non-taxable. So the Law Department has no problem on that. There's been maps done. The Engineering Department has looked at it. They have no objection to it. I don't know whether there's any questions or not.
I don't see any hands up here. Thank you, Attorney Farrell. Any questions or comments from the public? There being none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Leturno? Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much. Back to item six, which is discussion and/or possible action regarding binding arbitration award IBEW Local 457 Production Unit from the Electric Division.
Good evening, Jim Hottown Human Resources Director.
Good evening, Dennis Chicorello, Town Labor Attorney.
Thank you. Can you please summarize for us the arbitration result?
Yes, the town received the interest arbitration award on IBEW Local 457 Production back on September third, two thousand nineteen. There was essentially two issues as a result of the arbitration. One was on health insurance and the other pertaining to wages. There were some incidental changes made that the parties had agreed to prior to the arbitration award. And I've summarized all that in my memo to the mayor on September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, which I think you've been given a copy of.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I want to focus in on page twenty-eight of the contract. Particularly Article eighteen. And I guess preliminarily, I'd like to ask you if that article is one that you sought to have changed when you negotiated this contract?
No, that was not an issue. The negotiations had commenced prior to the Janus decision.
And what legal opinion have you gotten that Janus applies to this language? That some other case prior there too didn't apply to this language?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Are you aware of the case of Hudson United versus Chicago Teachers, nineteen eighty-six? Which is over forty years ago? Said that public sector union members do not have to be a member of the union. Forty years ago. Are you aware of that?
I'm vaguely aware. If I knew before you were going to ask this question, I could have been prepared for it.
Let's go through Article eighteen. So the first paragraph says that employees who are members of the union on September one, nineteen seventy-nine, or who later become members, will, as a condition of employment, be required to maintain their membership for the duration of this contract. So that means to me that until two thousand twenty, when this contract expires, in order to work for the town, you have to be a member of the union. Is there a different interpretation of that language?
Mr. Chairman, I'll answer that question. No. As far as I'm concerned, the United States Constitutional Decision by the Supreme Court indicates that if a person decides they want out of the union, they can get out of the union. And that would supersede any contract language. So the language is there, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's enforceable.
How many iterations of this contract have been ratified by the town since nineteen eighty-six? Probably two dozen, well, at least a dozen.
I don't think there's been that many. I could certainly find that out.
So the version of this contract that we're looking at, that's marked up, became effective in September one of two thousand fifteen. Was that language legal, September one of two thousand fifteen?
It was probably not enforceable.
So why wouldn't we go to the union and say, listen, this has been illegal for many, many years? Why don't we clear this up and have the language changed? We didn't raise it, of course, they didn't raise it. Why not?
I can answer that question. The next time that we sit down to bargain, this will become an issue. Because what you're speaking about is a result, you know, from our perspective, is a result of the Janus decision, and so we'll bring this up in negotiations. I understand what you're talking about, but we'll bring this up the next time.
No, because prior to Janus, one had the right to opt out of the union, but they had to pay an agency fee. This doesn't even call for agency fees. This is Janus didn't change the illegality of this language. So, and I'm going to tell you, I got a call from one of the members of the bargaining unit, and they were questioning me about that. How come it's in the contract? They're telling me I can't get out because it's in the contract. It's not right. And when a municipality or any governmental agency ratifies this language, they become complicit to violating First Amendment rights. But let's go on. Section two says, employees hired or transferred to the bargaining unit after September one of nineteen seventy-nine will be required, as a condition of employment, to join or make application to join the union thirty days from the date of employment or transfer, or thirty days after the date of this agreement is executed, whichever is later. Was that language legal on September one, two thousand fifteen?
Again, I think it was unenforceable.
Well, unenforceable is different because, you know, I do a lot of this stuff. And our courts, our federal courts, have been really clear that having these provisions, what they're known as is maintenance of membership provisions. Having the provisions is violating First Amendment rights. And it's been going on and going on and going on, and I talk and talk and talk. It's like a joke. It's not a joke to me. Because when I get a call from an employee who says, I'm looking at the contract, spending there forever, and they're telling me I can't get out, you got a problem. Section three of Article eighteen has to do with the indemnification. Union agrees to indemnify, save, and hold the town harmless from any claims, fees, losses, or judgments arising out of or related to any aspect of this article or its enforcement. What does that mean? That means if you get sued for violating somebody's First Amendment rights, the jury indemnifying, you're being indemnified by the union, right?
I think that would be included.
So I can understand why there's not an incentive by government, since you're agreeing to indemnify them. But I just, I can't... I understand why this went to arbitration. I understand there's some good things here. But this is a contract, and there is no cover page. You know, the Law Department hasn't given any direction. I mean, they haven't been asked to give any direction. But this has got to get cleaned up at some point. And I don't understand why we're just, we're ignoring it, totally ignoring it. But, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. I just can't vote in favor of this, understanding the work that's been done. But this language is very trouble. Thank you.
There's nothing to vote on if we're not appealing it. Attorney Chicorello, if we were to appeal this decision, would... Or recommend the next step, not accept it, vote to not accept it? Would that issue then come up in light of the underlying issues that were decided upon?
No.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Mayor? That's all I needed to know. Mayor?
I think, and Counselor Fishbein, if you have employees coming to an issue like this, it should have been referred to the Law Department, either that or to the HR department, to advise them that, you know, we have, we have a concern here and what's going to happen. But to my knowledge, no one in HR or the Law Department was aware of these questions about the contract and what rights people have.
And just, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Quickly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, in the end, and that has happened before. Ms. Hutt's aware that I have directed, I'm trying to get involved in the middle of these things. I have directed this employee who called me this week to call Mr. Hutt, and I have in the past. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the counsel? Questions or comments from the public? And there being no motion to reject, then we move on. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Onto item seven.
I move, we approve the new job description for the position of EMS Lieutenant in the Fire Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have some new guests joining Mr. Hutt.
Yes, and I feel, yes, and I feel very safe between these two gentlemen.
Even Rich Higard, Fire Chief?
Jim Hutt, Town Human Resources Director?
Steve Alsop, Deputy Fire Chief, EMS.
Thank you, gentlemen. What have you for us?
We're here tonight to seek your approval of a new job description. This is a position in the Medical Services side of the Fire Department. The two chiefs are here to answer any questions that you may have. But it's a new position and the weekly rate of pay is provided in the memo that I provided to the mayor, which I think also came to you, is $1,496.47 a week. So with that, if you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer them.
So am I correct to understand that while this is a new position, you're not adding personnel to fill this position?
That's correct. It's one of our authorized strength people will be moved over to this position. So we're not increasing staff. It's just moving to a different position.
And so what prompted the creation of this position, this new job description?
This is a role that's been needed for probably 10, 15 years now. And although Deputy Chief Alsop runs EMS Division, we need more hands-on, more time in the field, working with the paramedics, doing quality assurance. And there's a lot of pieces that have matured as EMS has grown that we have just, we have not been able to keep our eyes on things. So this role is, has been a long, open position for us. We've been struggling with trying to get that work done. This is clearly a position that we need for present work and/or future goals.
Does it serve, also serve the purpose of clarifying some chain of command issues?
It fits, dovetails well into our existing system. What it does do is helps us with surge. So as we have the cluster calls, this person, although they're doing administrative functions primarily, they are a responding, licensed and med-controlled paramedic. So they are able to respond while they're on duty to help. If we don't have any other vehicles to respond, it adds more capacity to the system. So it's well thought out in the design and the makeup of the job description so they can actually go deliver care as well.
Thank you. Counselor Morganstein?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So is this person a firefighter/paramedic? What is this person's qualifications?
The qualifications for this position would be a firefighter and a paramedic with medical control and at the lieutenant rank, so there is a supervisory role as well. So they can provide paramedicine in the field and they can provide firefighting in the field as well.
So currently, your staff, am I safe to assume that there are staff right now who are doing these administrative roles, but they are taking away from time in the field? As you describe this allowing more time in the field, is that correct?
The best way to describe it is, I need some help, is really what it boils down to. I'm responsible for the roles of the paramedic, making sure they're trained, making sure they have the right classes, make sure the calls are QA, make sure the documentation's okay. And I also have fire roles to deal with as well. I need that liaison between an administrative level and the field level. We don't have that. Our paramedics and officers now are very good at what they do. We have many lieutenants that are paramedics that take on this role. But I need somebody dedicated to do that to ensure we have that high-quality service delivery to the community.
And your current staffing right now, do we have some open positions within our Fire Force?
We'll be approaching you in the near future with the contract discussion. And I could speak more to that because that's still an ongoing process. So we do, from the present model of staffing, there are a few open positions. I believe it's two right now. That model, it's going to be open for change.
And with two open positions, are we, periodically, there's people who are out on maternity leave or there's an injury. If you're injured as a firefighter, you're out because you can't, you know, function fully, then you need to be out. Are we down two positions?
The two positions, the two positions do not translate to staff shortages. It's a group strength, each of the groups, there's four groups that will fill the manpower. So it would be a function of that. But the truck staffing that's on a daily basis is not shorted at all. So it's just a department strength number, but we have the staff, the trucks, that's not shorted on any day. So our present model of 16 people during weekdays, 14 on weekends, and 12 at night, they're fully complemented.
And it may not pertain directly to this, but I do understand in talking to folks that there are other towns when we're going looking for new employees that have different hiring practices out of the academy. So in preparation for coming up to ask for new, what you're saying is coming down the pike in the future, are we looking at the ability to hire from the academy at all?
The chief and I have been discussing some ways to do that in the future. So that is a plan that we're working on.
Okay. Anything that can give you help? You guys are, you know, literally lifesavers. And so if you believe that this is the way to go, I'm not going to question you. I just wanted to get some details. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen. I just wanted, because this individual is also going to be a firefighter, as a backup firefighter, the training, you know, what size tower are you guys training on now?
As far as the apparatus or the training tower itself?
The training tower itself.
It's a three-story, but we use the roof as well, so we actually can repel and operate off of four stories.
Okay, so we have at least two buildings in the town that are six or more stories higher?
Correct. We have a few.
So, yeah, because I'm thinking of like the Hilton Garden Inn, I think Parker Place.
Caplin's Building, Masonic, the Towers.
And how are we training rappelling off of buildings? Because obviously rappelling off of buildings seven stories high is certainly different than off a roof of a three-story building.
Yeah, we primarily don't train for that. That would not be a model that we would use. We would work off of the ladder trucks to do those things. Rappelling is more for high-angle rescue. Say we're working at the Oakdale, we have somebody up in the grid work of that facility that gets injured and needs to be removed. So it's us exiting a building via rappelling is not a normal approach, although we are trained to do it. Our skills, our equipment are all capable of doing that.
You're trained to do that when you originally get licensed to be a firefighter?
It's part of, yes, it's part of our basic, normal training.
And you train that at the regional fire training schools?
We can do it right in our own yard and we can repel off of the aerial truck as well. So we could free repel.
Oh, that's true, too.
And we have the tower truck as well that can go up 100 feet and we can repel out of that.
I just know, because I was, you know, I sit on Public Safety in Hartford and, you know, I'm with a lot of firefighters and they were explaining to me how the regional fires, safety training schools were a benefit because they had buildings that were twice as high as Wallingford. And I just, you know, I think you've answered the question. I, you know, I think it's sufficient. Because I know, I think the first year that I was up here, I think we spent like $300,000 to redo that building.
Yes, it's been replaced more recently at $650,000, but it's a brand-new facility, state-of-the-art. So the purchase points that you actually do rappelling from are all brand-new. So it's all certified, which is very important.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else from the counsel? Any questions from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Oops, sorry. Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterna?
Yes.
Maron?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. There being no further business on the agenda, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Multiple motions and seconds of all the same kind. Take your pick, Madam Clerk. Call those in favor and defy by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.